And then coming out. Here, there will be another public sack.
This one? Or you have you seen something coming off of that a little smaller?
But it has something more official now.
Oh, interesting.
Mike's got it downstairs. I don't know if that's what he even found. All right.
All right, we'd like to convene here, this council meeting here, five fifteen P M on Monday, October seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, here in the Linden City Chambers. We welcome you here as city council, and my name is Mayor Lundberg. I'll be presiding here this evening. We always like to begin first with an invocation and a pledge of allegiance. So we will first begin with the invocation provided by Councilmember Lincoln Jacobs, and the pledge of allegiance will be given by Tracy Stone. We'll go to that point.
Our dear Father in heaven, we come before thee this evening, Father, grateful for this opportunity to meet together as city council and other citizens. We pray that as we discuss items that are on the agenda, Father, that we would do so, and that we would take the necessary time, take a deep breath, and consider all the perspectives that might be involved in decisions that we make. We're truly grateful, Father, for our city staff, for all the effort that they put in in order to help Linden City be such a great city that it is. We're very grateful for our police department, for our first responders, Father. We're grateful for this community, for the togetherness that we feel. Again, we ask thy blessings to be with us tonight, that thy Spirit would attend, and we offer this part of thee in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Tracy, stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lincoln and Tracy. All right, so we will now begin our meeting for the evening. There are agendas at the entrance there, if you'd like to follow along. And our first item, we always have a roll call here of those present, so I'll start here on my right.
Steve Stewart, present.
Jake Hoyt, present.
Carolyn Lundberg, present.
Cole Hooley, present.
Lincoln Jacobs, present.
And Councilmember Van Broderick gave his regrets. He is unable to attend this evening, but we have plenty here for our quorum, so we'll miss him this evening and look forward to having him back in our next council meeting. All right, so for item number two, this is our presentations and announcements portion of the meeting, and I do see some staff and some folks here. Are they?
This is a time that'll work great.
Okay.
We were gonna have them just come in the open session, but this works too.
We'd love to have you, since you're kind of official city, arm of the city. Let's do it.
Yes. I step up to the front?
Yeah, right to the microphone.
Do I sit? Can I just?
Neither one.
Okay, hello, I'm Tracy.
Hi, Tracy.
Hello. I have my mamas here. We have been told that we've been awarded more money for our float, so we are just here as a big fat thank you for that, to help that be, one, more safe for our girls, and, two, just look better. So I think I have some mamas that want to say something, so.
We would love it.
I will turn the pen over to them.
Just as a reminder, the city council approved twelve thousand dollars for a new float or rebuilt float for this year, so.
She's like, what am I doing?
Come up here, ladies.
Come one, come all. That's right.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello, members of council. So first off, I mean, our biggest concern, and we know that same concern that you have, is the safety of these girls. They do so much for the community, so much heart and effort is put into everything that they do. And so there have been concerns arisen this year, just with things that have happened. And we are so grateful for the funds that have been allocated to the program, because it is necessary, especially for the safety of future, forever-long generations of Little Miss Linden girls. Specifically, the maintenance of the vehicle, of hopefully getting a new vehicle and new wood, and, you know, making sure that things like regular maintenance of oil changes, of all these things, that they regularly get updated, that they regularly get replaced. So that is the main concern that we have had with this year, especially for our girls. And there's more.
We were also discussing that it is important that we have drivers who are trained, and there is some sort of safety inspection done on the vehicle and on the float, because as families, we often don't have that expertise. And I did some calculations today, and this year alone, for the Little Miss Linden girls and including just one parent, we've contributed over fifteen hundred hours of service, and that's probably a really low estimate, and that's not including the rest of the year.
Well, it deserves a round of applause.
For sure. It's amazing.
We really, we love you.
It's amazing.
Okay.
Okay, so I just wrote this letter, and I don't know, do I have time to distribute it to you?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
So this is to you, city council members and mayor. We are so grateful and want to thank you for the approval of funds for the Little Miss Linden program and for the new float. We know that you watched the video of the float accident, but as a mother, I'm sure you can imagine how traumatic it was to see my baby girl launch forward off the float and land on her head and be face down, lying on the ground. I didn't know if she was alive or would be able to walk, seeing the way her head had hit the pavement. We believe that it really was a miracle, that she was okay, and that all the girls were okay. Since the wood was so old, it didn't hold the stands or materials very well, and so we would like to request, like we've said, that going forward, it will be regularly replaced so that it doesn't happen again. Tracy and Dan and Alan worked tirelessly to help make it work for this year, and we are so grateful for all their hard work, which they did for the girls, to make it a good experience for them. They are amazing. Additionally, Tracy works so hard year-round and gives so much of herself to this program. Part of what makes this program so great and special is her love for the girls, and they genuinely feel it. This year really opened my eyes to how much she really does. She is invaluable, and we hope she is compensated accordingly. I wanted to write this letter in appreciation of the Little Miss Linden program and the way it has made a positive impact in the life of my daughter Alexandra Tremblay-Lexi. I know that she is just one of the many girls, including the current royalty she serves with, for whom this program has been a positive influence in their lives. At this awkward age, when these girls struggle, we believe this has been such a blessing to all the girls who participate. We know it has been for our daughter, and we are so grateful to you for providing this opportunity for these girls. It is so good for them. For our daughter, two thousand and twenty-five will be the fourth year that she will participate in the Little Miss Linden pageant. As a parent, what I noticed about it right away was the focus on service, which we love. Tracy and Ashley were so kind and sweet to Alexandra and made her feel special, as they do with all the girls. The night before the pageant, she was so nervous, as it would be her first time singing onstage by herself. She was in tears and felt like she couldn't do it, but she did. That year, she won the Colleen McMillan Spirit of the Pageant Award. As we were driving home, she was whispering to herself in the backseat. Just participating in the pageant was so good for her and for her self-esteem. She had been bullied at her previous school, and so for her, it made a huge difference. It wasn't just the award, it was that she felt good about the service that she had done and that she did something hard that she didn't think she could do. Each year, she has been better at being onstage and enjoyed each service project that she was able to do, and this year, being able to serve the town of Linden as an attendant has been such a blessing for her. We believe that this program has been a gift to her and to our family. There is a children's hymn that says, "In serving I am blessed, in giving I receive," and this has truly been the case with the Little Miss Linden program. So we just want, and I'm speaking from my perspective, but I feel like all the moms have a story like that that they could tell about this program. So we just want to thank you for granting the funds and keeping this special program going, and for all that you do to make Linden such a wonderful place. It really is a special town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can't say enough how much we appreciate all of you, and Tracy, the queen. Thank you for being here, thank you for all you do, and we are so grateful that that was something that those girls could brush off and keep going and not have a tragedy, so.
I think you guys put in more time than we do, right? I just ran for city council, didn't know what it entailed, and it's just been such a wonderful experience to see everything that's going on. That was such a sweet letter, and I could express those same sentiments towards you guys for all of the time and effort that you put into this. Definitely is a wonderful program, there's a lot, our whole youth council and all of this is the most important investment we can have, so as moms that are helping make this happen, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes item number two, presentations and announcements, so we will now move to item number three. This is our open session for public comment, so if there's anyone that would like to come forward to the microphone, address the council briefly for anything not on the agenda this evening.
Doug Christensen and my wife Sandra. We live on Lakeview Road here in Linden. This is at least our third time being here. Mayor Lundberg, I want to speak directly to you.
Sure.
We've been here for many years, and under the care of Mayor Cullamore, and Mayor Aserson, and Mayor Dane. And I'm probably missing one of the mayors in there, because there weren't really an issue to deal with directly with the city council or the mayor, but this is the third time that we've been here to discuss a real problem about our water. And in all the years that we dealt with the city, they never made it their objective to take our water away from us and block our water. Now, this problem started probably early in the spring. Paul would know more about the details about this. And Paul has blamed me for the problem. Paul has put a lock on our head gate that we don't have a key to. He's blocked our water turn, and I'd like to know, is this something that you've authorized? Is this something that this city's authorized? I've got a little deal with the irrigation company to have my water delivered, and if the city's blocking the water, I want to know if the city's doing it. If it's just a city employee, I want to know if it's an employee that's doing it or if he's just doing it on his own. This has got to stop, and the problem's got to get fixed. They've identified whose cause of problems. The city continues to let gravel go down the pipe, and we don't have water. This is a problem.
I understand. You've met with staff and Public Works Department, and I'm not completely apprised of every, you know, little detail, but.
I've met with Mitchells, I've tried to get them involved. I have no ability to authorize work orders on other people's property.
Well, from what I understand, is the city did a scope, and they determined that the blockage or whatever it is, it's not gravel that coming from the city from that point, if there's some work that happened around State Street.
That's their opinion. I think that there's gravel that's blocked this, and I can show you up there at the pipe where the gravel goes right into the pipe, and you can see the gravel has built a cement bed in the bottom of this pipe. There's definitely gravel in there that's, they just replaced the gravel, but the gravel continues to go into the hollow. They haven't done anything to prevent the gravel from going into the pipe.
Yeah, from when I spoke with Juan a couple days ago, he said they scoped it, and where they identified the blockage, it was in a section that is not owned by the city. They think maybe some of the parties that did construction on State Street in the commercial corridor may have, you know, with some of their boring and infrastructure, that's where they've identified. And unfortunately, the lateral is not owned by the city. The lateral is, you know, a private lateral to your property. So he mentioned that they could show where the blockage was based on the camera that went down, and that, you know, it's not the city's lateral, so perhaps there could be some conversations with the businesses that did that recent construction that might have impacted the lateral.
Now, Mayor, the question was posed, who owns this? And nobody said, who owns it? Okay, so there's not anyone that has declared ownership. If you'd like to declare that I am the owner of this, I can do a little bit more with it. I don't have ownership of this pipe. I don't have control over this pipe. This belongs to the city or the irrigation company, and it travels through private property for about a mile before it gets to my house? And I've done everything I can. I located a cleanout, I've identified some of the problems, I've come and I've made these problems, you know, so the council's aware that there are problems that need to be solved. And then I'd like an answer whether the city's authorized Paul to lock us out of our irrigation water.
Yeah, that's news for me. I'll have to check on that. I'm not familiar with that.
I feel like it's a very personal thing. He's made accusations against me that aren't true. And he's taken this very personal, and if it's just his personal actions, I'd like an end to it.
All right, I don't know if our city administrator.
I'll have to look into this, this is all new to me.
Yeah, it's new information.
Paul did send an email to Oz Development, and I messaged him this morning to see if he'd ever gotten a response from them, and he hasn't gotten a response from them, so I don't know if someone with the city can follow up on that email, because it was.
Certainly.
Appears that it was probably when they were developing that.
Right, that's where I think the camera identified, that that's where the blockage is happening.
I don't know if someone can follow up on that and see if we can get some assistance.
It's pieces of concrete that have broken and gone into the pipe. So all the gravel that's come in and been blocked by that concrete is a combination of the problems, and the gravel has sealed it off so that it's flooding the park, it's not getting to us. It's a combination of the gravel and the cement.
Okay, I will, we'll follow up and see what's going on with that. The water's going to be shut off here in a few days, most likely.
This is irrigation water that flows all year long, and Paul had trouble with this last winter, making ice on the sidewalk. So this isn't part of the gray water system, this is a different.
A separate, okay, correct. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you for a little bit of your time.
Absolutely, you got it. Okay, all right, very good. Any further public comment? Okay, seen none, we'll move on to item number four. This is our council reports, and you look like you're ready, Steve. Go ahead and take it away.
I'm always ready. Mayor and council, I'd like to report on our meeting last month with the youth council. We were able to elect our leadership, and just want to read the names of those who were selected by their peers and by the mayor and advisors. Our youth mayor is Jocelyn Abachi. Our deputy mayor is Ivana Gleason. Our secretary is Avi Merrill. Our recorder is Isabel Kauk. Our treasurer is Kennedy Lloyd. Our communication specialist is Venna Orm. Historian is Zoe Butler, and our event specialist is Wes Carter. These are great young people, and even those that are in the general body of our group, they're just, they all could have served, and it was really a nice time to see now that we have some leadership going forward, and they'll be able to sit up here at this table and start conducting their own meetings. I would also like to just give a shout out to Ladon Edwards and Kim Lloyd, our two advisors. They work so well with these youth and are working really hard to continue to refine and improve the entire youth council program. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Just a quick update from P D. A generous donor has paid for a drug detection canine, so we are now in possession of a canine, and Officer Harmon has been selected as its handler. She'll begin training, will be, you know, become certified, and once that is complete, they'll find an opportunity to come and introduce the canine to us as the council, so that's exciting. Been a few years since we've had a canine on the force. You know, there's several other updates from the chief. One that stood out to me is they've had some feedback from the local schools with our S R O that we approve every year with our budget. They are appreciative of having an officer in the schools, and that is impactful for those kids, and they've heard some positive feedback there, so appreciate the council always supporting that. It's always a good thing. I, sending my kids to two of our Linden schools, have seen Officer Campbell there, and his presence is definitely a positive, so that's all I have.
Thank you. All right, cool.
Lots of good things in the areas that I cover. Probably the most pertinent coming up is just invitations to submit to the mosaic. That's the centennial activity for October. Residents can upload photos that will eventually be compiled in creative and interesting ways, but that's the next centennial thing.
Wonderful.
I love our youth council. Steve, thanks for your efforts there. I look at everything that goes on around us today, and it's like, the future is this youth council that we're, that you're working with. Appreciate that. And Officer Cullamore, I mean Campbell, I'm sorry. The other day, I walked down my stairs, and there was a police officer that had stopped a couple of youth that were riding those electric motorcycles, I'm not sure what we call them, but we see it happening all around us, and it's concerning, and how do we as a society get our hands around this? And Officer Campbell couldn't have known this, but I was in my living room, and I could hear the dialogue that he was having with them, and it was just a very positive, a very informative, a very, I'm not going to cite you right now, but I need you to understand what's going on here, and I need you to let your friends know what's going on here. It was just, you know, after the youth left, I had a chance to talk to him and express appreciation, but probably the best way we can make inroads into this, but super, super impressed with him. Harley, our aquatics director, left. She graduated from college and got a teaching job, and she moved on, and so we've been looking for a new aquatics director, and McKendra Camp has accepted that position now. She's been with us for seven or eight years, so we'll have an open rec for her place, but she's accepted that position. Junior Jazz registration ends November thirtieth. We're going to be offering Utah Hockey Club Junior Hockey Clinics in the spring, so some good stuff coming up. I think Adam has something in his report about our Halloween event that'll be coming up on Halloween. Reminder, it's not, our trunk treat's not going to be here on, what is, is that State Street, what is that? Center Street.
Main Street.
Main Street. It's going to be down at the park, but that's all I have.
It'll be a lot of fun, so people will park up here at the city center, and then the trail will be a haunted trail experience. Staff is going to make it a lot of fun, and then all the trunks will be in the park below. So it should be really fun. Wonderful. Really quickly, the Linden Pleasant Grove Chamber of Commerce, the other week, did a service lunch project with the pool, helped get all the items put away, all the tables and chairs, and a little bit of weeding and cleanup to help get our pool put away. Want to thank those business owners that came and did that. And then we also, this is our last week of our farmer's market, so the Linden Sunset Farmer's Market, it's down in the city center park, Thursday, between five to, I believe, eight P M, so it's the last one of the season. There'll be a lot of fall harvest things there. We love having all those businesses that come, local youth entrepreneurs, and can have their free little booths and support local, so. All right, we will now move forward on to item number five. This is our administrators' report. Mr. Cowie, I'll turn that over to you.
Yeah, just a few of the things, several of those have already been brought up, just reminders on a couple of these upcoming events. On that Halloween carnival, new location down in the park instead of at the community center, but we're encouraging parking up there and then walk down the trail. And then, let's see, the citywide cleanup with dumpsters is in November. Driving around today, I noticed probably a dozen bags that are already at the street, so we posted something today. The leaf bag pickup does not start until the month of November, so just if you have residents ask, don't put it in the gutter right now, and, yeah, keep it off the street on their own property until November. I think that is all I have, Mayor, so, thanks.
Great. All right, we will now move on to the approval of the minutes on item number six. So these are the minutes from September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Our joint work session on the twenty-fourth as well. Council, if you've had a moment to look those over, any additions or changes?
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council minutes of September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Exact moment. Okay, we have a motion.
His shirt matches.
A motion by Councilmember Hoyt, we'll give it the second to Councilmember Stewart. Any further discussion? All right, seen none, we'll call it to the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Said minutes are now for the books. We will now move on to item number eight. We have no consent agenda this evening, and this is a discussion only, not a legislative action, to investigate in anticipation of potential closing of Linden Elementary. Should we entertain, you know, a protective zoning of amenities such as school properties as some other communities have done?
Okay, thanks, Mayor and council members, it's great to see you. So we briefly discussed this previously, but, so I wanted to provide you some information on what other communities have done, you know, who's, you know, who's adopted these public facility zones and who hasn't? And so that's what this table shows you here on the, on that second page. Orum and Provo, for example, they're our closest neighbors. They have, in our zoning map, we do have properties that are designated as public facilities. We don't necessarily, we don't have a zoning ordinance for those, and that's something we should probably consider if we go this direction. That zoning ordinance would have things such as the purpose of the zone, the permitted uses, maybe some development standards or something like that. That's typically what are in those. I provided links for some other, some of those cities that do have those zoning ordinances in place. I thought Salt Lakes was pretty interesting. It, you know, they're just blunt. They say the purpose of their public lands district is to specifically delineate areas of public use and to control potential redevelopment of public uses, lands, and facilities. And so, and then they give a list of what's allowed in their zone. We've provided a map for you. Also, let me pull that up. So these are all the public school areas in Linden. These are both public charter schools and public schools owned by Alpine School District. The ones in yellow are private schools, properties. We have some other private schools that are in commercial, you know, that are commercial tenants that, you know, we didn't indicate those, but the properties in green are the ones that we would look at potentially rezoning to commercial, or sorry, to public facilities. We, again, we'd want to reach out. Sorry, getting choked up about this. We'd want to reach out to these property owners and discuss the zoning change with them, so. So do you have any questions for me or anything like that?
So these public school areas right now are not zoned as?
No, they're zoned, kind of what the, you know, residential R one twenty, or, that's what most of them are zoned as, is R one twenty.
So one of the things that, the reason I want us to hopefully consider some sort of a protective overlay at the very least, is many of these properties, certainly in the Alpine School District, were purchased with our tax dollars. And so being able to then make sure that, you know, whatever redevelops is in the best interest of the community. Interestingly, there is a myth that Linden's population of children has dwindled. And if you look at the two thousand and ten and the two thousand and twenty census records, yes, the average demographic size of family may not be as large, but our population growth in and of itself, we actually have more children in residing in the city. But there's a greater opportunity for other educational institutions. So although ASD may see shrinking numbers, we still have a lot of children to educate. And so that's where I think we need to look at in the fact that if they do choose to close a facility, we have such a short timeline to kind of get all our ducks in a row and have the ability to kind of navigate what happens with that property. It would give us time. And ultimately, you know, we could decide maybe there's other types of uses that would be beneficial. I'm not looking to necessarily tie our hands. You know, maybe a portion would be appropriate to become residential. But at least we would know. We could take a snapshot of what is needed in our community at that point and looking forward and protect those zones. Because once land is gone, it's gone. So, anyway.
So I see public facilities. I'm looking at our zoning map. I see public facilities all over the place that are public, right? Are city-owned sites. But our schools are not in there at this point. So what you're recommending is that we add all of our schools, not just this one, into a public facility zone. And then we don't, I read and reread your information. We have a zone for it, but we don't have a definition for it. Whereas these other cities defined it really well.
That's correct.
So what's the risk? I'm not an advocate that we don't. I like the idea of getting a definition, but I am curious. What's the risk if we didn't add definition? Do we know?
Just the enforcement of the code. If we don't have a definition, the ambiguity just leads to lots of potential problems.
Sure.
So if we're going to expand this zone out to other areas, we definitely want to get a definition.
It seemed to me that this would be a very wise thing to do, given some of the movements of the state to not have cities approve, right? Some stuff comes down to the Planning Commission, and it's just you guys as staff to make decisions. So if we can put this protective umbrella around it, it might give us more.
In this scenario, the district, right, rather than the state perhaps?
What do you mean?
Just that certain things could come down from the school district.
Ah, yeah.
And not that they would be buying the land, but anyways.
This just gives us a little bit more say in what's going to happen as they go forward. Yes. I think it's a great idea. I think it's the right thing to do.
What are the two properties on State Street? I recognize the schools and all of them, but...
I think the bus depot, and then I don't know what the small one is.
Yeah.
That's a redevelopment school, I mean, facility. No, it used to be like a...
Is it the special ed building? Okay.
It's ATech, yeah.
Okay, now I've got it. Thank you. The bus depot and the special.
I guess, what's the... So the smaller one, it's called what? ATech?
ATech.
It's higher need.
It's run by the school district? Okay, okay. And the land's owned by the school district as well? I wouldn't want to... I guess, okay, there you go. What about for the two private properties there? Us, are there any unintended consequences for us zoning their private property as public lands? Does it... Does it limit what they're able to do?
These aren't necessarily identified as ones that we recommend are rezoned as a public facility, but they technically are schools in our community, but they are private.
I think we're looking at the tax dollar, the tax dollar.
And so we just wanted to make sure that we're at least having the conversation that, hey, these are actually schools. It's a preschool and a Montessori school. So are you factoring all of the schools in the city or just specifically?
No, I'm glad you pointed them out. I think some of those are more for profit and might not want to have the opportunities for other buildings and other opportunities the way a school district tax dollar funded would.
And there's Kinder Kimber Academy. But that's also kind of a unique case.
It's in a commercial.
Because it's in a commercial rental.
Yeah, I don't think the intent, I mean, I don't think our intent is to try to do this with every private entity, more the public entities.
We just wanted to call it out and identify it and make sure there was something in the record that you're making a distinction between these because of their commercial purpose versus something else.
So it sounds like everyone here is favorable to it. When, you know, what kind of timeline to take real action on it and get this done?
So I would need to write the ordinance, post the public notices for it, public hearings, take it to the Planning Commission and then the council. So we're a couple of months still on that, probably 60 days or so.
So going back to when the district purchases these properties and it's designated R-1, what is the implication of us coming, you know, so many years later and, you know, rezoning for whatever purpose?
Public facilities overlay, or it has to then, it has to stay a park or some public use that the city can then navigate.
Yeah, that's correct.
I mean, do they have any, something they can do about that? I mean, I know they have the opportunity to come and express themselves publicly, but can they come back on us for trying to change things?
As I say, you have rights to develop as the code exists if you file an application to make that development start before the zone change begins. So the school district wouldn't have any ability. Once we notice this up, they could come in and protest and say, hey, we don't think this is a good idea, but there's no pending applications to develop into a residential use. So there's no vested right. So they really couldn't come back and do anything on us.
That makes sense.
And it's the same with those private schools. I mean, they're different situations because of the taxpayer money used to buy the land and whatnot. So there are different factors. But they're in the same boat when it comes to there's no pending application to use the property for a residential purpose. So there's no vested right. And so we could change the zoning if we felt it was necessary.
Going forward? Okay, thank you.
In reality, this is just trying to keep it so that it doesn't develop into something that you don't want in the future.
Right.
And a simple way to say it is essentially the school district by state law preempts most of the city ordinances anyway. So a school district, if they want to build a new building or a new parking lot, there are very limited things that we as a city can say about that development. We're prohibited from saying no to them.
But if they change the use in the zone to residential, that's where...
If they're going to sell it, that's where this really comes in.
That makes sense. Thank you.
When I was with South Salt Lake, Granite High School closed. The city then went in and rezoned all the Granite School District properties to community facilities. And then, you know, because they wanted to try and... The city was working to try to purchase the Granite High School property. Ended up not working out. So the corner there, they kept as public facilities. So a new library came in, and then they rezoned it back to R-1A or something like that, and to allow some single-family homes.
This wouldn't prevent some new school district or the current school district from saying, we want to convert this location to our new administration building. It wouldn't prevent that. It wouldn't prevent it from becoming a new bus garage, but it would prevent it from being sold for a non-public facility.
And it looks like, just from the quick research I did, Orem did this in 2023 with their school properties.
Yeah, and an example of that is Hillcrest, I believe. They turned the land into a gorgeous, amazing park. Tons of pickleball, huge park. It's a beautiful facility. Yeah. And now the building, the former elementary school building, is a community center. So one of the things too is, you know, keeping something that's a hub for the neighborhood, walkable, bikeable little hub, really strengthens the integrity of the connectedness of the people that live there and having somewhere to gather. So they felt like, you know, they had seen one of their schools closed and built up for homes, and they wanted to be able to keep these locations. Just for the record, if you look at the 2010 census, Linden went from, we had 2,929 school-aged children in 2010. And in the 2020 census, we have 3,340 school-aged children. So we are still needing to educate a lot of children. And our build-out, you know, anticipating full build-out is potentially 17,000, I think, is the figure I've heard in the past, potentially. We're about close to 13 now. So we still need places of learning. So however we, and this property particularly could be really significant. Whether it stays a school or not, it's still right here in the center of our city center. So I think we would be particularly interested in what happens to that ground if it closes for some really, maybe some amazing opportunities here in our city center. So, anyway, thank you. If there's any other questions for staff or what we want to direct them to do, bring something back, any other caveats we need to explore?
I'm very comfortable with this. I think general consensus to leave out the private, right? But other than that, I understand the reasons for it, and I agree. You need time for us to be looking at this very timely, so appreciate it.
Agreed. Recognize listener bringing it to action.
All right, council. Well, we have a short agenda tonight. So after this, we just now go in... Actually, we were going to have a closed session. We're still, okay, we're still able to do that. Is our guest available?
We're still going to have a closed session.
Okay, wonderful. All right, so council, at this point, we're on item number nine. We're going to go into a closed session.
I moved to enter a closed session.
All right, thank you. Motion by Councilmember Stewart, seconded by Councilmember Hoyt. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need a roll call?
Roll call vote?
So we do the roll call. We need to stop the recording and then do a new roll call.
You do the roll call while the recording's going so that they have on the record that they voted.
Steve Stewart, aye.
Hoyt, aye.
Aye.
Cole Hooley, aye. Lincoln...